Uh, invocation please. And we have Rabbi Michael Bernholtz from Temple Vess Salaam this morning.
Rabbi.
It's wonderful to be here, to receive an invitation and to come speak not just to our city council, but really to this whole community. As I was thinking about the prayer that I would offer, I went to one of my resources that goes through each of the Torah portions of the week and has a whole different set of meditations and readings. And this week, we are in the midst of Exodus, and it is the Torah portion of the Golden Calf story, which is not what is one of those sad moments when you want to have one of those moments where things don't get right, where the people of Israel lose their focus, where they tune in on the do acts of idol worship and lose their connection with God. This is always one of those moments, and how do we deal with those moments? So I was very surprised to find this reading. "Help me decline the mountain of my life so that at the end of the day, I come to higher ground with a larger view of where I have come from and what I have arrived at, but teach me most of all to be glad of the joy and the labor of the climb." And I read that, and I'm thinking, this is the Torah portion where Moses is with God, and he's communing with God, he's out Mount Sinai, he's getting the Ten Commandments, and then God says, "Stop, Moses, get down there. The people are worshiping idols, and they're totally against you, and they're totally against me. Go and get 'em, Moses." And God is wrath-ing, his wratheth, waxeth, hodeth, which is kind of when you read the Hebrew, it has the even the the TH of Good King James English in the Hebrew as well. And so there's Moses charging down the mountain, and he's ready to get the people, and God is wrath-ing, waxeth, wratheth, hodeth. And Moses is calming God down, and God is ready to punish the people, and they go back and forth, and Moses is able to give to give God a chance to have perspective, not to wipe out the people in that moment, and there's still consequences in all of this. And then I find this reading about climbing the mountain and getting perspective and finding joy in the climb. And I thought, what an incredible twist. And that is the kind of twist that we're in the midst of with all of them. Somebody reminded me, today's the day that the Prime Minister of Israel, Benjamin Netanyahu's in Washington in a controversial moment of addressing Congress, and it stirs up American politics and Israeli politics, and we're in the moment of Purim, which is a story of Esther, when you're supposed to get so intoxicated that you can't tell the difference between the villain and the hero. And it's these, all of these stories that turn everything and make us take a step back and a step forward, and I realize that's the message. And it's a powerful message, that even when we have those moments like God and Moses and seeing the people of Israel going astray, even when we have to face the difficult challenges in life and the controversies and the stuff that has us charging down the mountain and our wrath waxing hodeth, and we just want to, we're frustrated and angry, that's what Purim is about. That's what this reading is about. How do we take that stuff and not let ourselves get dragged down and angry and feeling all of that stuff, but turn it into this experience to help us decline the mountain of life so that at the end of the day, we can come to a higher ground with a larger view of where we have come from and where we have arrived at? And teach us most to be glad of the joy and the labor of the climb. There are going to be challenges, there is going to be controversy, there are going to be places of disagreement, and we are going to lose our cool sometimes. How do we turn it? How do we find ourselves in it? How do we turn those experiences into ones that take us to somewhere that is high and holy, not just as individuals, but as a whole community? Amen?
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, and we will call the March 3 regular city council meeting to order. Mrs. Vok, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Old?
Here.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mayor Winger?
Here.
All right, preliminary matters, agenda additions, deletions, and adoption. Are there any changes?
Staff has no changes. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Carries four, nothing. That'll move us to proclamations.
We have a proclamation here. Is Paige Woodward here?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, would you come forward? I will read this bar information. Whereas many times when individuals and families need help in meeting basic, life's basic needs are experiencing times of crisis, they are not sure where to turn, and whereas 211 is easy to remember, easy to use, three-digit number, recognized as the central linkage point in providing individuals and families with guidance, support, and information they need to solve their problems. And with crisis intervention and suicide prevention, they seek to keep them safe. And whereas the city of Vero Beach is fortunate to have 211 helpline, a service that is available any time of day or night that enables individuals and families to get the help they need. And whereas 211's specialized advocacy and support services also include the Help Me Grow initiative, which helps link vulnerable families to crucial services, while 211's lifesaving Sunshine daily phone calls continue to positively impact the lives of local, housebound, isolated seniors at no cost to those participating. And whereas 211 helpline service is free, confidential, available 24/7, with highly-trained staff who assists thousands of individuals in need of crisis intervention, assessment, and referrals to community services. The staff at 211 will continue to provide that warm voice at the other end of the line, carrying assistance to the people of the community and hope when you need it most. Therefore, now, the city of, the city council of Vero Beach, Florida, does hereby proclaim the week of March 2 through March 8, 2015, as 211 Awareness Week in the city of Vero Beach, and urge all citizens to be aware of the only telephone number they need to know access to information and receive referrals to over 3,000 programs and services in our community that provide assistance in such areas as healthcare, insurance, volunteering, food, daycare, mental health counseling, support groups, and financial services. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, council. It's nice to stand here in front of you this morning and to thank you for your support of 211. As we are, we've been serving Indian River County for, I think, 10 years now, and I'd like to, we are gaining traction, but again, this helps, your proclamation helps get the word out to our citizens that the 211 helpline is here 24/7, connecting folks to the programs and services that are available. Too often, people thinks that there isn't something there for them for their particular need because they don't know about it. And if we can get the word out about 211, they can simply dial that number, speak to one of our resource specialists, and we'll do our very best to connect them to the programs that are out there. Our Sunshine program is one of the ones that I was real excited to expand up to Indian River County when I came on board about six years ago. We call shut-ins every day at about the same time of day, just to do a well-being check, so to speak. Hello, how are you today? And it is truly a program that has saved lives. So often, there may be that senior that just, you know, had a fall and can't get to the phone, and when we don't get an answer, then we work closely with law enforcement to have emergency services go out and do that check. The new Help Me Grow program is, has just been launched this month. Here we are, the third day of March. It's a program, initiative that Governor Scott got on board with and through the Department of Education. 211, it's not a new program, it's just putting programs under one umbrella, 211 being the logical place for that. And it serves families with infants or children birthed to eight years old. If they're developmental delays or any other behavioral problems, they can call the 211 helpline and speak to a Help Me Grow coordinator, and then get connected to the services. Oftentimes, in those instances, families are overwhelmed. It's like, I don't know what to do. I haven't, my other children were fine. I'm not sure what's going on. So again, it's getting people hooked up to programs and services. So again, thank you so much for your support of 211, for this proclamation, and it's good to be here in front of you again this year.
Thank you very much. Come forward, and it's good to get the word out on 211, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, Randy. Proclamation.
We'll get it after.
Oh, sorry. I thought I got to keep it.
Thank goodness for the staff side that notices the thing that we old men do, you know, you have to watch Randy and myself.
Exactly. Thank you.
All right. Certainly.
It's important that we are also a blended service of not just information assessment and referral, but we are the suicide hotline. And thank you so much. Thank you so much. It's too often, too often, we lose folks that, you know, that are struggling. If someone dials the National Suicide Hotline here in Indian River County, they're actually answered by 211. It comes up on our, down in our resource center as the suicide hotline. We are credited by the American Association of Suicidology. They're very strict protocols, how to handle those sorts of calls, and we work very closely with the chief police and the sheriff here in the county for, in those instances. But again, thank you so much. In fact, I'll be down in Martin County schools this afternoon because they've had some challenges down there. But thank you so much for that reminder, but we do want our people to know that help is three digits away. So, thank you. Thank you.
Next, we're going to recognize Mr. Hagerty, the owner of the Pocahontas Building, or if you would like to come up. I'll go ahead and read the appreciation letter, and I'll let you guys say a few words. I think many of us all know the Pocahontas Building on 14th Avenue. It's very, very distinct, has become a landmark here in Vero Beach. The certificate of appreciation for outstanding service to the community reads that the city of Vero Beach would like to thank Mr. Hagerty, owner of the Pocahontas Apartments, for his hard work and dedication in keeping the integrity of the building as its landmark for downtown Vero Beach. At 88 years old, Mr. Hagerty continues to work on the building every day, repairing and improving its condition. And on behalf of the city council, we recommend you for, we commend you for your help in making Vero Beach such a wonderful community. We greatly appreciate your service.
Well, thank you. We certainly appreciate the cooperation that we've had with the building department and the other departments. Actually, the young lady, my daughter, Karen Hagerty, should probably be given this award, but she's there every day, taking care of the tenants and taking care of the ongoing repairs. It seems like it's been a long process, over probably 10, 12-year period. We're finding, we're redoing some of the things that we did 10 years ago. But anyway, we do appreciate the cooperation that we've had. And Karen, would you come up and say something? This is a... She's shy.
Come on up. Well, we'll give you a chance to take a picture, too, here. We'll want you there.
Oh, I really don't know what to say except for that. It's a beautiful building, and we love it. We fell in love with it from first time we saw it and couldn't resist falling for that trap. Continuous, but it's worth it because it's a beautiful building.
Thank you.
You want to come and take a picture? Bunch of guys, come on up.
Right here.
Thank you, sir.
I love your building. Thank you.
We understand. We understand. I have an award, Councilmember Randy Old, and I want to explain the award and the importance of it. Under Florida law, there are 410 cities that have home rule, meaning that the primary government to do all things that aren't, we aren't precluded to do by the Constitution of the United States or the Constitution of Florida are done by your local government, and they're 410 cities. And we belong to something called the Florida League of Cities, which the 410 cities belong to, and you'll note from time to time, we'll have information from Jupiter or from Destin or from Stewart, and we'll do the like thing they do. And that's not by accident because we work in concert with the Florida League of Cities. In fact, you know, I've talked to them this week a couple times. But one of the things that is hard to understand is how complicated our little local city is. I mean, we have seven or eight enterprise funds, we operate a major airport, we have contracts, we've been here since 1925 officially. And I know the first year I sat on city council, it was all a blur, and I think Amelia has been a much faster learner than I ever was. But this course, which takes four days, is so very important because it explains the foundations of how all government, particularly home-rule government, works in Florida. And Randy, you might, I want to give you the certificate, but you might want to comment on what you learned, because I think it's, I learned a lot, I know.
Well, I really was a little, not apprehensive, but I've been to a number of sort of three-day, four-day course things that didn't work very well. But this was very well done with a series of instructors, probably representatives from maybe 40 cities were there. Some were new, and some were, some were new like me that'd never been through this and been in an elected position, and some were experienced. And the things that you learn are a variety, from finances to voting, to comparing cities and how they do things. And it was very, it was very educational for me. I learned a lot. Maybe you don't notice the difference in me, but I did learn a lot. I would recommend it for everybody that starts out in this process because it's, there's a lot more to it than you know, and it was very helpful.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Do you want to take this picture?
Yeah.
Do we have a camera?
It's all scooched together. Who's got a camera?
Hold your certificate.
I can get a camera.
By the way, Tammy insists, by the way, Tammy insists that we all go to this, so we've all been to it. We don't really have a choice. All right, with that, I'll open public comment. Mrs. Frye, would you like to speak, please? And remember, try to keep it to five minutes, okay? Three minutes?
Oh, five.
Well, three is official, but five is...
Five whole minutes. Thank you.
Five is okay.
Good morning, council and staff. For the record, Phyllis Frye, 275 Date Palm Road. As you well know, on February 17, Indian River County Commissioners voted unanimously to allot 1% of its annual budget in an amount of $2.7 million, should it become necessary, to litigate between the county versus All Aboard Florida. Simultaneously, Martin County allotted $1.4 million, and St. Lucie Village $60,000, which was 1% of their total annual budget. Tonight, I will be speaking to the St. Lucie County Commissioners and inviting them to join us. When the executive branch of government, including the highest office of the state of Florida, the bureaucrats, the feds, and their cronies joined hands in unanimous promotion of All Aboard Florida, they turned their backs on the people of the Treasure Coast, leaving us no choice but to turn to the judicial branch for protection. Most notably, DC lobbyist and attorney Paul Ryan has been retained by 10 communities in Martin County under the auspices of Citizens Against Rail Expansion in Florida. Other support groups include Citizens Against the Trains and Florida Not All Aboard. The Martin County business community, including Bob Crandall, ex-CEO of American Airlines, is also vested and committed in opposition to All Aboard Florida. Of course, All Aboard Florida has decided to rebrand itself, trying to hide under a new name that will no doubt come to be known as the Not Too Bright Line. The $1.75 billion in private activity bonds cannot be dispersed until the 12,000 public comments in response to the draft environmental impact statement are mitigated, and thus far, we have no response from the FRA. The PABs have a deadline of July 1, but the FDFC currently has no appointees and cannot disperse funds. So while we're waiting, Citizens Against the Trains in Vero Beach, that's us, are hosting a Move 'em West, Move 'em West, No Trains Rally at the County Administrative Complex this Saturday, March 7, at 2:00 PM. We invite you to join us for live entertainment by the country western Bobby Owens Band with Rhett Palmer in seeing and a list of distinguished guest speakers, including our own Randy Old. Thank you so much for coming. He'll be speaking on behalf of the Vera Man Archaeological Site. We have Stanford Erickson, distinguished author and writer who wrote for the president of the American Association of Railroad for 33 years, who will give us a terrific insight as to our solution for this train problem. So kick up your spurs and give them the boot. Let's kick the trains out west. So we've designed a win-win solution for all, for the Not Too Bright Rail Service, for FEC, and most of all, the people of the Treasure Coast in a letter to the governor, which we invite you to sign. So we hope to see you Saturday at the Move 'em West rally. And if it just went, one final comment. When all of this began about 18 months ago, it was the grassroots people from the bottom up who did the research, did the homework, spoke from podium to podium, from Brevard to Broward, and educated the public. We had MIT researchers, we had the facts, and gave the truth about All Aboard Florida. So as the public and our publicly elected officials became educated about the subject, it demonstrated a process that we should hold very dear, which is the people, we the people, working with our locally elected officials to effect change. And I hope that the people in all of these communities who are now so united in this take it as a good lesson to please participate in government. This is our democratic republic in process, and I think that's the most important lesson that I've learned, and it is one that I hold dear. And it shows you what one person can do. And we'll say that Tracy, excuse me, Casey Trailer Ingram will be speaking at the Vero Beach Country Club next week, the Taxpayer Association. She is the Erin Brockovich of the Treasure Coast, and she has just united this thing 50,000 signatures on her petition, so I hope you will attend that as well. And thank you all so much for your time and attention.
Thanks for your comments. Much appreciated. Further public comment? Yes, sir, come forward.
My name is Joseph Gafanti, and I pay taxes to the city of Vero Beach. This, I'm going to talk about the FMPA for as little time as I, as possible. Apparently, they have a new chairman. He's a petty politician from a town called Newberry up in the central part of the state outside of Gainesville. It's interesting, this, I have, I'm reading from the 32963 paper. This is what he had to say. "You can't fight that battle in forming the public, and they never, will never understand. This room is where we need to solve the problems, not in the public media." Isn't that nice? Here's a guy who's a backroom, smoke-free, backroom closet wheeler dealer, and he's now the head of the FMPA, and he doesn't want the public to know. And the public, he says that the public doesn't understand what they're all about. The most condescending comment, but you would expect that from a slimeball politician. He's the mayor, by the way, of this little town up there, and now he's the head of the This is what you're dealing with. They just, they're spending, according to this paper, spending $100,000 to get some publicity firm to untarnish their image. Well, and then he says, one of these guys in here says, "Well, let's, we should all sit down and break bread together," whatever that means. Well, I don't break bread with gangsters. I stay away from them as best I can. And what you're dealing with is a bunch of crooks, FMPA and OUC. And the four of you are aiding and abetting, aiding and abetting in the money laundering operation by not trying to get rid of and dispose of our power system. The mayor looks confused. Good evening.
Thank you for your comments, as always. All right, further public comment? Dan?
Hi, good morning. I'm Dan Lamson, the executive director of the Indian River Neighborhood Association, and I just have a few short comments for you. The IRNA supports the city manager's proposal to see if the city's participation in the new Indian River Lagoon Council would help the city implement its intentions to restore the lagoon's water quality. As your city manager states in the backup for this agenda item, at this time municipalities are not participating in this council, so granting your approval to explore whether there will be a role for Vero Beach to be a member is not tying the city to any financial or policy commitments. The counties that have joined are each expected annually to contribute $50,000, indicating that if the city were to participate, it likely will require some cost. On the other hand, if this organization proves to be effective in receiving funds for lagoon restoration projects, the, there could be financial benefits. One of the objections the county has to the council's organization is that the board of directors includes non-elected officials. We would suggest that whoever represents the city in exploring the council's structure inquire whether the city would have voting membership on the board and whether this would be full or partial. In conclusion, we encourage you to support the city manager's proposal to learn more about this council. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your comments, Dan, as always. Who else would like to comment? All right, seeing none, I'll close, I'll public comment, which will move us to consent agenda. Are there changes in this? Anything that anyone would like to pull? Seeing none, I take a motion to accept it.
Motion to accept?
Second. All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carries four, nothing. That will move us to 4B. I will read the resolution. "A resolution of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, authorizing the purchase of a VACON truck, authorizing the execution and delivery of additions to the municipal lease purchase agreement with Baystone Financial Corp., Kansas State Bank of Manhattan, NKA, KAS State Bank in Kansas, for the purchase of a VACON truck in the amount of $336,384. Authorizing city manager to take all steps..." authorizing city manager to take all steps necessary to finalize and implement the terms and conditions of the lease purchase financing agreement and providing for an effective date requested by the finance director. Staff comment, please.
This is a typical purchase that we did, for example, with the street sweeper just about a year ago, and it places the cost over time. It also allows us to fit it into the budget, which this does fit into the budget, as noted in the pages. But it also allows us to use the equipment and pay for it as it is being used. We think it's a very reasonable way of doing it and would highly recommend the approval of this resolution.
All right, is there a public comment in this, please? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Council comment or a motion, as the case may be?
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, Mrs. Vok, if there's no further council comment, call a roll, please.
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes. That moves us to 5A1. These are ordinances and resolutions for first reading by title, and they require a future public hearing. 5A1 requires a hearing at the next city council on the evening of March 17th. An ordinance to the city of Vero Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 76 Historic Preservation of the City of Vero Beach relating to historic properties eligible for ad valorem tax exemptions, providing for conflict and severability, providing for an effective date requested by the Planning and Development Director. Staff comment, please.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, I'm Tim McGary, the Director of Planning and Development for the city. The proposed ordinance before you is intended to expand the list of properties eligible to receive ad valorem tax exemption when making improvements to their historic property. Existing regulations limit the eligibility to only those historic properties listed on the Vero Beach Register of Historic Places, which is generally city-owned property and one or two private properties. When the existing ordinance was drafted, it was believed that this limitation provided incentive for historic properties to seek local designation. Well, that didn't work out that way with having anybody come in under those circumstances. Now, with the designation, the Osceola Park Historic Residential District, with 89 buildings that have been designated as contributing buildings to the district, the staff recommends, supported by the Historic Preservation Commission and the Playing and Zoning Board, that the eligibility be expanded as allowed by the Florida statute. Such expansion of eligibility fits well with the city's efforts to stabilize and conserve its historic inner-city neighborhoods. Although this incentive is not a major one, as we point out in the agenda package, it's just another tool that can be applied to help stabilize these neighborhood, enhance our neighborhoods, and protect the city's historic resources. Unless you have any questions of me on that, it's pretty straightforward.
Does the public have any comments, or would anyone in the public like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Council comment or a motion?
I just had one.
Go ahead, Mr. Kramer.
My understanding is that this exemption is for the improvements and renovations. It's not necessarily, it doesn't take the whole property off the tax.
No, it's just for the, the structure themselves.
Okay, so it's, it's just really a tax abatement for the.
Right, for that incremental increase in value.
Got it.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Vok, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes, it passes four, nothing. That moves us to 5A2. 5A2, I'll read as follows, and it will be, we will revisit this with a public hearing on March 17, 2015, in the evening. An ordinance to the city of Vero Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 63 Off-Street Parking and Loading Requirements to the City of Vero Beach Code clarifying text related to calculation of parking requirements, providing for conflict and severability, providing for an effective date requested by the Planning and Development Director. Staff comment, please.
Oh, thank you. The staff's prepared this ordinance to clarify the interpretation issues related to off-street parking requirements, specifically the outdoor dining and retail display services and, and sales. These issues became apparent during the long process on the Mulligan's appeal hearing process. The text amendment clears up these problems in applying the code. And basically, there is really no change in how we were applying the code, but this clarifies how the code should be applied. It makes it much more transparent, I think, to the average person reading it, rather than having challenges in appeal hearings, and the staff felt this was a way to clean this up. The exemption for outdoor dining retail sales was retained and clearly stated in the ordinance, which it wasn't in our previous, in the existing ordinance. The text clearly states that parking requirements for specific uses are based on parking ratios, and that wasn't a clear, we talked about floor area in there, but not every parking is based on floor area, so we cleaned that up. Although you could intuitively glean that from the code, it wasn't specific enough, so we changed that. So based on, we refer to, it's not only based on floor area, but there are other characteristics, as you're probably well aware, like number of dwelling units, the number of boat slips, that kind of thing. This ordinance was unanimously approved by the Planning and Zoning Board, and unless you have any specific questions of me.
Well, I have a question, but let's see if the public has any question first. Okay, seeing no questions from the public, we'll close public comment. I guess my question has to do with, I hate to, I hate to pick on Mulligans because they do a wonderful job for the city and are a wonderful partner. But taking Mulligans as an example, they have outdoor seating. Now, what, if outdoor seating has a roof over it or some sort of an awning over it, does it get calculated in parking? What, what is defined as outside?
No, if it has a roof over it or an awning, you're, you're able to get an exemption of 200 square feet. The rest of it is considered exempt under the, I mean, it is going to be considered floor area if it has a roof for that, except for the first 200 square feet, with the reason being, if you notice during the winter or inclement weather, people are going to put plastic down and all that, so in, in all ways, it's almost like an enclosed structure, and that's why we did it that way. But for other outdoor dining, where you just have little umbrellas over a table or something, that's considered outdoor, but if you put a big tent over it, we had a special event at Dockside where they had a big tent over it, that would be considered not exempt, except for the first 200 square feet.
So taking Mulligans, again, the Adirondack chairs would be exempt, is that correct?
They would be exempt under that.
Taking the Vero Beach Hotel, the umbrellas.
Would be exempt.
Would be exempt, but taking the, the beach house or the bar area, it does have a roof area, and you can sit underneath it.
That's correct. So you, you look into those things.
You have 200 square feet.
Right.
In that case, the 200 square feet.
Is the exempt area. The rest of it would be floor area and defined for parking requirements.
Jim, does this solve the problem?
Mr. Mayor, nothing solves the problem, unless, unless we figure out how to use skyhooks to hang cars. But I think it does address two issues here. One, the clarification, as Tim pointed out. The second thing is, is the vision plan that we had and the entire concept of outdoor dining trying to encourage that. And, and we use Mulligans, we use Vero Beach Hotel and Spa, but if you go around, you've got Casey's as an example, where we do encourage that type of dining out on the corners. And, and so I, I think it falls right in with the, the spirit of what our vision plan was. As, as a matter of fact, this morning, I just signed another license agreement for Blue Agave, where they're going to use part of the sidewalk. And if they had to go and calculate that into some type of parking requirements, then we could have some real issues. So I, I think it does, it clarifies, it does not solve a parking problem, which I think has been the thrust, we're trying to work through that exercise. But at the same time, we want to make sure that we're getting the commerce in, in the areas that we want.
You might want to, it, it would be, it would be a diversion, I suppose, but parking on the beach, you've been working on it since we're talking about parking, it might be worthwhile, or would you rather delay it? It's up to you.
No, I, I don't mind addressing it because I think it is part and parcel to this type of discussion on outdoor dining. And just for clarification, we're not only addressing it on Ocean Drive, but we also had Main Street involved in that, we had the Chamber of Commerce, and we had the Oceanside Business Association working through these issues. Some of the things that we did to try to help address those, better signage, making sure people understand that we do have a parking lot down by Hummerson Park that has no restrictions on parking, but we found that our signage issues were really a distraction. You come across the bridge on Highway 60, it brings you right into Sexton Plaza, and visitors to our community, then they're going to go right to the first parking space they see. We have now, and I think we have the new signs already in place, going in tomorrow, which will show vehicles that we have parks both north and south of that, that have accommodations, for example, restrooms, bathrooms, and that kind of stuff, and have parking, and in many cases unrestricted, if you go to J.C. Park or South Beach. So we're trying to get our signage addressed there. The, we went from two hours to three hours because one of the voice of concerns that we had was that you did not have time to go have lunch and then go shopping before your car got sighted. So we addressed that issue, and we've had probably 40 different people involved in these conversations addressing the parking. It is still not resolved, we're still trying to work through having some method by which we can have employees. We've identified there's about 188 employees just using the six major employers on the beach side, and that's 188 employees who have to find parking virtually every day, although it has been pointed out that a lot of those folks who work there don't necessarily, everyone drives, but that gives you, we have 736, 763 spaces that the city provides as parking spaces. So a good third of those will be taken up by employees. We are working with GoLine, we are working with those six major employers there to try to see if we can accommodate by having off-site parking, i.e. Riverside Park being an area, and having a reliable shuttle. But at the same time, that shuttle would address, for example, if you wanted to pick up, the bus would stop, and you could pick it up at Hummerson Park and ride it all the way up to Bobby's or the Vero Beach Hotel and Spa. So it'd be public transportation, not just for employees. But we're, we're still trying to address that issue, it is still an ongoing concern. The issue really is, depending on whose shoes you're standing in, as to how bad the parking issues are. If you go in the evening and you go to the north side of Ocean Drive, you will find that in Bobby's case, in the Ocean Reef, Reef Ocean, they have parking issues at night because of the demand for, for eating, and that includes the Vero Beach Hotel and Spa. If you go during the middle of the day, you go right into Central Beach, and you see the, where the shop owners are having the issues. And then it appears that down toward Hummerson Park, it's not as critical in addressing the concerns, but we are trying to take an overall view of that. Tying this into, this ordinance into that is obviously part of still making sure we keep our core values, i.e. that we want to encourage people to have outdoor dining, and at the same time, welcome our visitors that are coming in, and allotting how we can the parking that is going to be necessary. And as pointed out by the Chamber of Commerce, and Penny Chandler in particular, this really is a good issue to have, it's just that it's aggravating. But those of us who have ever been to a college campus, please show me a college campus that has plenty of parking. It just doesn't occur, which implies that you have demand for those services, and I think that's what we're seeing here. The 14th Avenue, they just started a shuttle bus on their art walk, where we've allocated a parking space across from Jetson, a parking lot across from Jetson, and they are running and paying for the shuttle to carry people to and from. I, I know that the mayor and myself and Jay have been on that bus as well, and it was very successful. It's only been tried one time, but the parking lot was full, people were riding the shuttle bus, and so that may be the wave of the future of how we address some of our parking issues. It appears that we have enough parking spaces, they're just not conveniently located, and we've got to figure out how to make, how to make it more convenient. I, I think by enlisting the businesses, which we have tried to do in this conversation, has made it something that we have to, we're getting enough input to do it, and trying to find not the perfect solution, because outside of using skyhooks, I don't think there is a perfect solution. So we're going to have to have people use spaces that are available and try to make them as accommodating as possible, and we're doing that.
Yeah, and I think you're working closely with the Indian River Chamber of Commerce, are you not, in this?
Yes, Indian River County Chamber of Commerce. Penny Chandler has been involved and been very active in that. Georgia Irish with the Oceanside Business Association, been very active, and we do want to express our gratitude. We've had some meetings with some of the major employers. For example, Vero Beach Hotel and Spa, they are a major, major employer there, and you talk about eating areas, I mean, they have areas around their swimming pool, they have people out on their veranda, they have a, a restaurant inside. They are a big player up there as to trying to accommodate the, the general public. Duncan has been extremely good in working with us and trying to address the concerns. He obviously has concerns of not only his customers, but also of his employees, and, and we're working through that. It's just that it's taking time, and unfortunately, that's the nature of the beast.
But like you said, it's better to have higher demand than supply.
Oh, yes, ma'am. There is no, and on 14th Avenue, you go down there and talk to them about Friday nights and the art walk, and how people are inconvenienced by the parking spaces, and they're jumping all over every place else, but indicates that people are going there, and that's the critical. The thing is, we got to have something attractive enough that people are going to be inconvenienced and still enjoy themselves, and it appears that people, when it's a, a point of destination, people will come, i.e. the Clydesdales.
All right, I think we should get back on A2. Are there further comments about the ordinance itself from city council?
Motion to approve for March 17th.
Second. Mrs. Vok, unless there's further comment, call a roll, please.
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes, it passes four, nothing. That'll move us to A3. Question, Mrs. Vok, this one doesn't have a revisit date, does it have?
Um, yes, sir, this one will, the public hearing will be on March 17th.
All right, so this is a resolution, A3, I'll read it. It'll be heard again on the evening of March 17th. A resolution of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, repealing and replacing Resolution 2006-08, and amending provisions to allow for use of the tree planting trees to include funding of beautification projects and activities approved by the city council commencing January 20th, 2015, providing for an effective date. Staff comment on this one, and I believe this came from the tree beautification.
Tree beautification. It actually originated within the department directors. We have been using funding for beautification projects through the Tree Commission, and when somebody read the fine print, that was never authorized, so what we have been doing is what we're authorizing to be done in this modification, so it's an administrative change. And just to make sure that we are compliant with our own rules is where we're going with this.
Retroactive.
All right, any public comment?
The important thing here is that all the funds going to the Tree Commission for expenditure comes through the city council, so.
Right, of course.
All right, seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment. Resolution, please, for approval or comment?
Motion to approve for March 17th.
Second. Mrs. Vok.
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes. Mrs. Vok, you're up.
Okay, we have a few appointments to some of our commission and boards. The first one is the Architectural Review Commission. There is an alternate two position open on that commission, and we have an applicant that wishes to serve on that board. It's Mr. John Scott Holt.
Motion to approve, Mr. Holt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It passes four, nothing.
Okay, and on the Utilities Commission, there is a member-at-large position open, and we have an applicant wishing to serve on that commission, and that was Ms. Laura Moss.
Motion to approve, Ms. Laura Moss.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes four, nothing. Now, Mrs. Moss is with us today, so congratulations, you're in for an interesting experience. Are those, is that all you have?
That's it, thank you.
Well, Mrs. Vok, one other question. You also, next me, we'll have some further, won't we? Don't we have, I was trying to think which one, the historical, or there's?
Um, I'm working on that one.
Okay.
Yeah, hopefully, we'll have some more applicants for some of the other boards that we have openings on.
What about, what about Judy Orcott?
Judy is on the Utility Commission, she is your appointment.
Oh, okay, so that's automatic.
Yes, sir, and she's.
Yeah, and she's, yes, sir, and she's come in to be sworn in, so that's all taken care of.
Okay.
Just for informational purposes, she and I have already had conversations.
Good. So, there, for the public, there are two additions, a regular member, which is Mrs. Orcott, who Randy Old has appointed. Each of us gets to appoint one person to three commissions, the finance, the planning and zoning, and the utilities. And then, we pick at large the further representation, which is where Mrs. Moss comes in. All right, that brings us to city managers' matters.
Yes, sir, as the backup says, the only thing I'm asking for here is just to make sure there's no objection from the City Council that we are pursuing the Indian River Lagoon Council, and when I say "we," it's the City of Sebastian, the City of Indian River Shores, and the City of Felsmere and ourselves, just to find out how we would fit in. As you know, the Indian River County chose not to become a partner in this process. We think that there could be some value to our community, we haven't really been able to define that. There is a meeting tomorrow of the Indian River Lagoon Council, in which they are going to be talking as to how cities would fit in and what our roles would be, if in fact we choose to join. And there is a provision in the interlocal agreement that allows for members to come other than just the counties involved. So, the key is, this is really more information on, if there's any objection, then obviously I would pull back, but I think it's something worth pursuing. Any interlocal agreement would have to come back for City Council approval, and you would have the final, obviously, the final say on that, and that would be any commitment of dollars as it develops. And hopefully, at that time, I would be able to explain exactly what our roles would be. As I indicated to the people who are sort of putting this together, I don't want to be a city that we just pay $5,000 to and sit in a corner and not have any voice, we want to make sure that we could be heard, whether it's collectively as the four cities or independently as individual cities. But I think we have, using the four cities example, we have a lot of commonality that we could reach, opinions that we could express, and possibly receive some grant funds and help address some of the concerns, as the Council has made this one of our high priorities is addressing the lagoon issues.
To editorialize, I don't think any issue is more important than the lagoon. And there's something else here, too, which I think is all important. We're the city of Vero Beach, but I think working with our sister cities and the community around us is all important, and this is an example of potentially doing that, which I think is wonderful. From time to time, and I'm going to ask a couple of questions where we have had some division with the county, but we should, all governments should be working for the interest of the people, and this is an example, it's actually come to us, I think it started in Sebastian, but I think it's an excellent program myself. Other people have comment?
I just, I think it's great that we're pursuing this. I had spoken with the city manager yesterday, and I didn't think it was going to be good for the lagoon to have a missing link between Bavard and St. Lucie County, where Indian River just is not involved. So, if we can come together as cities and do this, why not?
So, I think the consensus has moved forward.
Yeah, definitely. We will do that, and just for informational purposes, the four city managers did meet, the four managers from the communities have met and discussed this, and we're all going to be taking it back to our councils just to make sure there's no issue. The mayor is correct, Sebastian, I think, took the lead in the discussion, but Felsmere, even though they're sort of a little bit off the beaten path, are very, very much involved in this, and Jason Nunamaker has expressed a major interest in trying to become part of this lagoon council.
Great.
Fantastic.
I have a couple of questions for you, Jim, I think you know what they are. First of all, you know, we've been talking for months and months and months with the county, and that we have, I think, the proper fertilizer code, which I think we're right to have, but we're really not all that well-equipped to enforce it, and we've asked, gosh, it's got to be, it started with Mr. Whittle eight or nine months ago, I would estimate, where are we on that particular project?
We think we're finalizing the agreement. I met with the county administrator, the county attorney, and the public works director last week, and we think we've identified, one of the issues that we had, I guess, is trying to figure out how complex or how simplified we want this. As I expressed to them, I would like, in my recommendation to City Council, 16 hours a month that we would have the use of that inspector. Now, we're going to use our inspectors, too, are going around, and if they see violations, but this inspector obviously would be specialized in that area, and 16 hours a month, we could work out if it's four hours a week or eight hours every other week, however the terms work, and try to make this as simple as possible. And we're trying to achieve that, but I have not seen the final document come across. We, again, we met last week, we have been talking about it, I think I sent you all an earlier email that's probably four, five, six months old, but it just takes time when we're dealing with our counterparts.
Well, I think it takes too long, is an editorial comment, I mean, this is obviously in the interest of all people in Indian River County, and, you know, if you have a code and you can't enforce it, that's not a good thing, and the lagoon is of interest to everyone, that's my editorial comment. And thank you for doing what you're doing, press on, please. The second one is like onto it, the golf course, the Dodger Town Golf Course.
Yeah.
I mean, if we could free that up so that we wouldn't have to have the golf course and at least get part of the, rid of part of the debt payment of $400,000 or $500,000 a year, and use that for roads, we'd be well ahead of the game. And this one's been going on for at least six months. Where are we with the county on this?
Yes, sir, just about, I guess it's been a couple of weeks ago, we got 11 questions from the county, which we've attempted to address, and I think we have addressed those. The city attorney's office and the county attorney is sort of working through some of those. I am hoping that we will have something to bring to you on March the 17th for consideration, but I haven't seen the latest round of communications.
Yeah, that's our latest goal, is to get you the interlocal agreement, March 17th, but again, it seems like we keep getting questions back, or issues or concerns back from the county, but we're addressing them as they come up.
And again, just for informational purposes, we have agreed that our recommendation to the council is that we would concede all of the right-of-way that they need for their turning radiuses and for the improvements on Aviation Boulevard, if that should ever happen, and that we would transfer those rights-of-way to the Indian River County, so that should not play in any role, any obstacle. And so, what I thought, I guess, and that was my priority, is that I thought the priorities were, is they couldn't get the right-of-way, we've done that, now we're going through some other details. But we did respond to the 11 questions, I think we received them on a Wednesday, and by Friday morning, they were back in the county's office, so we're still working through that. They know that our goal is March the 17th, they may not put it on their agenda until after we pass it, that's been a little point of discussion, as far as I'm concerned, that's fine with me, as long as we agree with the terms and conditions.
Well, again, editorial comments, that land should be, become more valuable if that subdivision goes in, in the property just west of the airport. And the second thing is, this, I saw the 11 points from the county attorney, and, you know, it looked like it was written to be very cliche by a Philadelphia lawyer, and so I hope we can, we can get this done, I really do.
We're heading in that direction.
I want to commend you, Jim, for the traffic snarl that you caused. I think the public may not know, but Mr. O'Connor, more than any other single individual, and of course, Rob Slezak and others, Monty and so on, worked, and the police department worked hard on it, but I think the Budweiser thing with limited publicity was a tremendous success. Congratulations, sir. Second, third, fourth, I think that's fantastic, you really did a good job with that one.
Thank you very much, but the Bush family really deserves, Philip Bush, he was there the whole time and has sort of been the guy, he reminded me, he's a 30-year resident of the city of Vero Beach, and he and his father call this home, and so, this was an opportunity for him to really bring the Clodsdale's in, and I agree, I mean, it was phenomenal. My hats off to all the departments that were involved, but one of those is the police department. As we all know, flexibility in police departments is a challenge, but we had officers out there, and the route sort of changed, and where they were going to stop changed from every 15 minutes. And finally, the officer led the front of the carriage there, just said, just tell me when to turn left, or tell me to turn right, and tell me when to stop, and it really worked out phenomenally, and it was just really a proud day. Unfortunately, Aviation Day didn't work out so well on the Saturday before, but as I told Philip Bush, that shows you that God loves Clodsdale's more than he does airplanes. So, that's just the way the deal works.
I have no further questions of the city manager, does any of the city?
I have a quick question. Mr. Mayor, when you were at the PSC hearing, we had a lot of individuals come in and talk to us about the short-term rental situation, and there's a task force working, we'd also discussed that day about raising the citation amount, and I just wanted to get an update on when that will be coming back to us.
Yes, that'll be coming back to you on the 17th as well. It has to go to the Planning Commission first because it's a change of an ordinance, as opposed to just building it into the zoning code. The city attorney's office is handling that, and I believe it's a $500, we're going right to the 500.
Yeah, what the planning director's going to recommend is the $500 for each violation, and as you know, each day a violation is a separate assessment of a penalty if it's a continuing violation.
Okay, thank you.
See if that's a better incentive.
And I believe they have a meeting on the 12th as the Planning Commission.
It's in the land use regulation, so it needs to go to the PNC.
All right, no further questions, questions for the city attorney. Seeing no questions, we'll get to individual council matters. I have several. Vero Beach was named one of the best commuter cities in Florida recently, we continue to get accolades. I sat in, and I encouraged Ms. Graves to comment on this, but I covered for her, we cover back and forth for each other, and seem to do a lot of that. It's the beach preservation plan, there is an 89-page plan from the county, and it seems to, for the first time, address the high-use area, which is Sector 5. Why don't you comment on it? I would encourage everyone on City Council to look at it, because I think it's an important document. You want to comment, Ms. Graves? You know more about it than I do.
The plan was, that has been, since I joined the Beach and Shores Commission, that has been a project they've been working on. And so, myself, Don Dexter, Monty Falls, and the city manager, when we've had a chance, we've worked really hard to make sure that we're inserted in there, and the consultants did a fantastic job, James Gray did a good job, the coastal engineer for the county, of really recognizing, we are known for our beaches, but where the tourism is happening, where the tax dollars is happening, is Sector 5, which is within the city of Vero Beach. So, we're hoping that that's going to really elevate Sector 5 and draw some light on the importance, because it's one of the critically eroded beaches in our county, as defined by the state. So, we'll see if we can't get some work done to see that we aren't going to be critically eroded forever. So, I just appreciate all the work that went into this on all sides, both teams, everywhere. So, it's been a process, and it's still ongoing, but I think we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you for that comment. Two other things, the economic development plan that the county has is at another step, which is worth reviewing. Lastly, to reveal the City Council, a week ago Monday, I did have an extended conversation with Mayor Barefoot. Nothing particular in that, he was very cordial, I was impressed by his professionalism, and he asked some questions, I answered the questions to the best of my ability. So, I want you to know that that happened. That is all I have. Mr. Kramer?
Well, I guess, we kind of had a jury weekend, other than clearing up for the horses, which was a good thing. But we were able to attend the Italian Food Festival, which is something I think everybody needs to attend at least once when you're here, possibly more. You know, one of the things that I like to do is I like to work on an awful lot of projects, and, you know, I'll probably start bringing some things up here to the council, here probably in the next several months. But, you know, one thing I think we need to really be aware of is that the, our enterprise zone has got sunsetted. And so, you know, we've got a lot of programs that have helped our businesses around the airport, and I know Felsmere had wanted to come into the enterprise zone project, and to have the enterprise zone program just kind of get pulled out from underneath of us here was something we really didn't want to see happen. So, what I think is, will probably be coming up, and please, you know, kind of keep it in mind, is that we're going to try to emulate, to the best of our ability, the enterprise zone projects, probably through Home Rule with the county, with the cities, and try to kind of keep that thing going. It would really be a shame to lose the momentum that we've got with this enterprise zone and lose a lot of the faith that the people have had, who have invested their dollars into our enterprise zone. Outside of that, just keep in mind, the parade's coming up this weekend, and we've got the Under the Oaks coming, so we've got another possible parking issue coming up next, in the coming weekends.
Ms. Graves?
Just a reminder that the downtown gallery stall for the art walk is this Friday, hopefully the weather will hold, and other than that, see you in two weeks.
Matter of the parking.
Oh, yeah, park, please park by Jetsons and we'll shuttle you in.
Mr. Old? I, again, commend you on the Budweiser, Clodsdale horses, that was really a lot of fun. And Aviation Day was good, too, it just, the weather wasn't so great, but the next day, an awful lot of people seemed to be taking free rides up, or rides up in the bomber, and great, great event also, so.
That's it.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.